Start with pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Next I have is for today's agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Very none, all fair say aye.
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 Most carries likes his approval claims for payment.
Actually, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated five twenty-two twenty-three.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Very none, all fair say aye.
Aye.
Most carries now we have claims.
Make a motion to approve claims payment from May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three through June fifth of twenty-three.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Very none, all fair say aye.
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 Most carries now I have is consideration of utility permits. I have three of these.
Lance, I'll make a motion to approve utility permits twenty-three dash zero one seven, twenty-three dash zero one eight, and twenty-three dash zero one nine.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. They're all hard of Iowa.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Very none, all fair say aye.
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 Most carries now it was consideration to approve classy retail alcohol license, tempers edge wedding and events.
I'm making motion to approve. I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. It's twelve month term. Effective. June, I believe.
Yes, June twenty.
You have a discussion. Very none, all fair say aye.
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 Most carries next is consideration to approve Heartland Risk Pool Insurance Renewal.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the risk, Heartland Risk Pool renewal as presented.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion.
Do you want us to present it?
Sure. Yeah, we saw the materials. Reese, the other Judy.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'll just go. You want us to, where would you like?
Oh, yeah.
So, go ahead and start and then Mary will talk about this also. So, um, the property.
First of all, Judy, you're the director of Heartland Risk Pool.
I'm administrative part on insurance risk pool. Mary Griffin is with Holmes Murphy and that's the broker. She, the Holmes Murphy is the new broker as of December second. So, um, first of all, with the property, I, what we've been talking to all the counties about is just really thanking everyone for looking at the property values and getting the property values up to where they should be. That's been, it's been talked about for several years. Um, we really took hard look at it. We had C-Biz come out last year do the property evaluations and have had everyone go through their values. And so there is an increase in your property premium, but that is due to increasing the values of the property, not the pool, not the pools rates. The pools rates have been the same since about two thousand eight. So it's, the increase is due to the increasing the property values. So now I'll go ahead and let Mary kind of go on with it.
Absolutely. So as Judy said, uh, the pool really insulates you from the standard market, uh, standard market. I was telling Judy is, is probably going to be the death of me on, on property this year. Because it's, it's just not pretty and you guys have been in the pool, very insulated from, from that. Um, so what you're going to see is up at the top, your property evaluations did increase by forty, almost forty-seven percent. Um, I don't think, I don't know when the last time the property values had really taken a hard look, but with the cost of construction and, um, uh, re-construction, that's where, that's where that's coming from is making sure you have the replacement cost in place for your policies. So you'll see the premium is, um, exactly the same as your exposure increase on both the equipment breakdown coverage as well as the property insurance because they are both related to your property values. Uh, your premiums again up, up on the top, um, just show year over year being the left, the middle column is what your twenty-three, twenty-four premiums are for the various lines. Your overall premium change is about two point seven seven percent of the overall. So five forty-six to five sixty-one. Um, below are the exposure changes that the, the county submitted to us. Uh, on the bottom, you'll see the mod factor. Um, and I, let's see if we got this in here. Lance, I will get you the, we're putting together, I didn't realize till last week that you guys have received some of the, um, the, the mod calculations to show you exactly where it's coming from. Um, so we are working on those. We usually do a midterm. So we are getting, we'll getting them together to, um, to submit and choose if that's what you're used to getting this at the renewal. But your mod did go down from a point nine eight to a point eight one. Um, just as a reminder, anything or under a one point oh is, um, is really good. One point is an average expected work comp loss, uh, based on your size and your losses. So you guys have been doing almost twenty percent better than other counties of your size. So that's, that's really good. On the backside, you want to talk about that?
So then each, um, each year, um, we have a premium credit and this is based on what the, the surplus is and the Heartland Board both in acts on it in January, what they want the premium credit to be. In years past, they've used maybe two hundred fifty thousand, three hundred fifty thousand to be allocated between the counties. This year they were conservative and went with a hundred thousand. So that's allocated between the, the county. So that's what you'll see what your premium credit is there. So that shows you it's ten thousand two ninety-eight. So that is put your net premium, that will be do is the five fifty-one, uh, two sixty-two. And we will be in, uh, June next, next week. Next week, I think we'll have our meeting and get the carrier approvals ring, um, approved, the renewals approved. And then I'll be doing the invoicing after that, the week of June nineteenth. So that's when those will come out.
And the premium, premium credits are out there because we don't need to be holding the cash if we don't think we need to have it.
Right.
So we give the credit back to the counties.
Yes, based on your loss exposure and that's how it's allocated now. So.
Yeah, we just wanted to build a pot a little higher.
Right.
As expenses are growing up.
Any questions on that first sheet? Okay. Um, the next document, this is really just a, a high level coverage summary that we put together for you. I, unless you want to go through it, um, it really is just kind of provided to you. Uh, it has all of the contact information for us at Holmes Murphy. If anybody has questions, just a snapshot, if you want to say, okay, what is my deductible on this or what's my limits on this? This is just for Hardman County. If you have any, if anybody has questions on any of this or you see something and you have questions, certainly reach out to any one of us at Holmes Murphy or to Judy and we can answer those questions. So just a summary document. And back behind is their schedules of all of the exposures that were submitted to us by Hardman County.
Any questions? I think you got something to say. So recently we switched to Holmes Murphy. One of the thing about Holmes Murphy, we get Mary and Mary, where are you originally from?
Iowa Falls.
So it's good to have.
Yes. So, and then the only other thing I would just say, you know, the claims are still being handled by Creative Risk Solutions. So the work comp adjusters are Jennifer Ostrobin and Danielle Mallard. And then liability is being handled by Ashley Brown. If there's any type of public officials, claims, anything like that, those are being handled by Mike Vaughn. So that's the same, um, Troy Schultz is, uh, the loss control person. And so Troy's been out to all the counties. Um, I think he's already through a second visit. He's through the second quarter. He went out initially, um, and provided initial assessments and recommendations. And then he's been coming out the second quarter to do training and then he'll, he'll have third and fourth quarter visits also. And then the only other couple of things I wanted to mention were, um, we're working on the harassment prevention training, what we'll be doing this year. The Heartland Board will act on that, um, either at this upcoming meeting or in July and determine how we have the KPA system through Holmes Murphy. That's provided that no fee to the counties. There's many trainings in that. There's a harassment training in there. There's many resources of different things that, uh, for different trainings, safety, ergonomics, things like that. And then we are also going to look at having an actual person, um, come out and print, present whoever, if the board acts on that and approves. And so if your county would like to have the harassment training in person, that will be available. Otherwise it can be done through the KPA system online as it has been in the past. And then the other thing is the employment practices seminar is September fourteenth. And that will be at the Tampa County Nature Center at Otter Creek. So if you haven't been before, you'd like to come, that's the, you can mark your calendars for that. So, and I'll be sending out the invites for that in August. So just giving everyone a heads up.
Thank you.
And then the last sheet in your packet, Lance, is the authorization to mine. Um, so that's.
Make sure that gets sent.
Do you have any questions?
I'll leave a copy of this in the auditor's office for public review.
I have another copy.
Okay.
We have a discussion. Hey, thank you ladies. Are you no more? All fair say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most carries next is consideration to approve use of courthouse grounds, Eldora Specialty Care.
Lance, I've made a motion to approve the application for the use of courthouse grounds by Eldora Specialty Care for June ninth, twenty twenty-three, eleven AM to one PM.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Very none, all fair say aye.
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 Most carries next is consideration for resolution twenty twenty-three eighteen cancellation of outstanding warrants, twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year.
We'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash eighteen.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Very none, roll call. Aye.
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 Most carries next is consideration to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty, city of Alton tax payment abandoned property.
Lance, I'm making a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty for abandoned property in Alden.
We'll be second it.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Very none, roll call.
Please.
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
Aye.
Most carries next is consideration to prove economic development signage, community betterment match grant application award.
Yes, I do these. Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the signage, community betterment match grant for both Nimrod Meats and Studio G Dance Academy.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Deb, did you want to say anything on these or?
Two new businesses. So it's exciting to see that.
Any other discussion? Very none, all fair say aye.
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 Most carries next is consideration of the payoff of the HVAC system with ARPA funds, July first, twenty twenty-three. So we have these ARPA funds and we could do a budget amendment to do it in June, but that'll probably end up by the time we do the budget amendment, it gives us about a week ahead of time. So July first, money's already been budgeted. We want to use that money and pay the HVAC off right away.
Correct. And it's paying off the line of credit. Yes.
Right. I, you know, do we need to make a motion on that or wait until it comes on the claims list in July?
If you make the motion, you can go ahead and put it right on.
Okay. I would make the motion to, um, approve the payoff of the HVAC system with the ARPA funds, um, in the first warrant writing in July of twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Very none, all fair say aye.
Aye.
Most carries next is acknowledge receipt of the sheriff's department monthly report of May.
Lance said make a motion to approve Sheriff McDaniel's monthly report for the month of May.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Very none, all fair say aye.
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 Most carries next is receipt of the auditors' monthly report.
Make a motion to approve the auditor's monthly report for the month of May.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Very none, all fair say aye.
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 Most carries next is recorder's monthly report.
Lance said make a motion to acknowledge receipt of the recorder's monthly report for the month of May.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Very none, all fair say aye.
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 Most carries now I have change of statuses.
Make a motion to approve the change of status for Penelope Kleimish, um, dated May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. It's a resignation, um, as a food service clerk.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Very none, all fair say aye.
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 Most carries.
Lance, I'd make a motion to, uh, change the changes, uh, change of, uh, employment for Miranda Clemish. Uh, the original, uh, request or original status was full-time. It is part-time. So it just needs to be changed to part-time position.
I will second it.
They moved and seconded, the motion is to change Miranda Clemish to a part-time position. Any other discussion? Very none, all fair say aye.
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 Most carries.
Um, next one I have is the hiring permanent part-time Mariah Clemish at a rate of sixteen dollars an hour as a food service clerk effective May twenty-sixth.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Very none, all fair say aye.
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 Most carries, I do, did I read her name right on the one before?
Yeah.
Miranda.
The next one I have, Lance, is, uh, a similar, uh, change where the position is part-time, not full-time for Denise Hilton, uh, food service cook in the sheriff's office, the rate of sixteen dollars an hour.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Very none, all fair say aye.
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 Most carries.
That one is hiring of Colton, Colter Stein, effective May twenty-ninth as a correctional officer at twenty thirty-five an hour, permanent part-time.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Very none, all fair say aye.
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 Most carries.
Next I have is the hiring of Caleb Graham as a correctional officer effective June fifth, at a rate of twenty thirty-five an hour, full-time.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Very none, all fair say aye.
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 Most carries. Next I have is, uh, the hiring of Janetta Buck as the general assistance coordinator
effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three at a rate of twenty-two seventy-five.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. This is combining a job, just finished getting her up to seven and a half hour days.
Correct. So she's now the veteran service officer and she will be taking the role of the general assistance person for Hardman County. As CICS did some switching and co-mingling throughout the region, there was a shortfall here for, uh, this position.
You have a discussion. Very none, all fair say aye.
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 Most carries, Thomas, you're up.
Good morning. Um, I put in front of you the agenda, a copy of the agenda from last week's meeting. I went down to the FEMSA rulemaking, uh, public meetings that they had in Des Moines, uh, federal agency that came into the state of Iowa to conduct their public hearings this time, um, to discuss their rulemaking on pipelines and especially on carbon dioxide pipelines. Uh, they had twelve staff. They had a good turnout. I think they did a very good job in taking all of the public comment. Um, there was a, probably at least, at least a hundred and fifty landowners there. And then there was a bunch of other people there, two coordinators and several county supervisors. All of those people got to make their comments heard and they, I think they were well heard. Um, and then talking to the, uh, group over breakfast and there's a couple of other opportunities. Um, they were very excited about the input they got. So, um, you also have a copy of my notes. Since I've just got to cover a few of those. Uh, this was draft rulemaking, so their rulemaking probably will take, uh, up to two years. We're hoping that they can move those along a little sooner than that, but it's federal government and it's rulemaking with public hearing and all of that. Um, they are working now and the one note to make is that, um, the siding, siteing and, uh, boundaries, their locations are all up to the state. They are not up to FEMSA. FEMSA can't make any rules on siding. And then, uh, FEMSA is adding a requirement that any land movement, uh, potential for land movement, whether that be from excessive moisture or excessive dry, um, earthquakes, anything like that. They're adding that into the rule that will include all pipelines, including carbon dioxide. FEMSA's rule also covers the material that's suitable for the, uh, CO2 pipeline. It also covers the welding, the installation, the cathode protection or the cathodic protection. Um, that's what FEMSA's rules cover. Individual states still regulate the eight-one-one and the one call. So, um, FEMSA doesn't make any rules about farmers or any other public that goes through and digs up their pipeline. That's all a state regulated item that, uh, requires anybody that's going to dig, uh, more than a garden with a spade, uh, has to call eight-one-one before they dig. And then, um, I already spoke about the process of the new regulations will cover both liquid and gas. Um, there was a discussion about three different, three different levels of carbon dioxide transport. One is a gaseous state, one is a liquid state, and then one is a, uh, critical state, which is very high pressure, very low temperatures. Um, their pressures they're talking about in the CO2, CO2 pipeline are up to three thousand PSI, um, and anywhere from a twelve inch up to a forty-eight inch, uh, pipeline going through. They also admitted that, um, the process is really just part of, um, the global process on greenhouse gases and whether or not you, uh, drive to that theory or not, that it's not an issue at this point. It is that it is happening. It's a global process and carbon dioxide reduction is on the table and is one of the regulations that the United States is working on. And this is one of those projects. The discussion was also about that some of the public hearings or some of the public meetings and even the trainings that they've been out. And again, there was lots of counties represented and hearing the discussion from all the counties. The pipeline companies have been going in and telling people that it is like a can of soda pop. You have carbon dioxide in your soda pop. You have carbon dioxide in the gas station. That's all it is. Well, the problem is, is that that's a very small quantity. It's not running through a forty-eight inch line at three thousand PSI going across people's property and going sometimes within several hundred feet of their, uh, residence. So that's part of, part of the, uh, issue at this point. And then the other part is that in scale, they compared it to the United States interstate system. So the interstate system has forty-five thousand miles of interstate highway. The pipeline system's going to be seventy thousand miles and could be more than that by the time CO2 pipelines are done across the United States. They may be doubling that. Um, so the scale of this is another, another big piece of that. And that's why, uh, FEMSA's looking at the rulemaking is to try and make it as safe as possible with the amount that it's going to be. And then, um, they, they very clearly, FEMSA, EPA, Department of Energy, I think another agency was there, but all of them, uh, recognized clearly that there were gaps in regulations right now. Um, because none of the pipelines that are currently out there are running at these higher pressures and with the amount, the size that the pipeline can be. So, um, that's why FEMSA came trying to get some input on new regulations. It's also that, um, there's a lot of regulatory gaps in where Hardman captures going. So because it's federal government, it's different departments handling different regulations. So, um, the one piece is, is that one agent, the FEMSA regulates the pipeline. From here, when it comes, when it's being put in the pipeline, that's where FEMSA's regulation starts. And then to wherever it is either sequestered or add another term for wherever it's used. But that's where their, their rulemaking ends. So there is a gap in what's the regulations look like on the capture side to make that pressure. And then the sequestration of that and EPA is the company that, or the, uh, department that is responsible for the capture part of that and making sure that where they sequester it has no impact on groundwater. Excuse me, on groundwater or land movement or anything like that. So, um, several, several groups are involved in that. The other part is that there's no, there is currently no tracking on how much CO2 is captured and how much CO2 actually gets to the sequestration site. So they don't have a cradle to grave tracking of that product like you would other hazardous materials. Um, so that was one of the things that was brought up in the room and then another part of it was that, um, there was history, um, mostly from up in Dakotas, I, if I remember correctly, where when the pipeline people went in on the Bakken pipeline, they brought in a lot of people and it increased their number of domestics. It increased their sex trafficking. It increased the number and up there because it went through the Indian tribes especially. It increased the number of missing female Indians. And so one of the questions to FEMSA was can they put in the rule that these companies can't hire sex offenders, domestic abuse people, things like that in the hiring process to keep that out of our communities because we don't want to bring all these people in and then increase all the crime rates within our, with our communities. The next thing that was huge, um, was their plume modeling and two companies that are out there have not provided any kind of models at all. Um, and one company is providing some modeling. Um, but there was also discussion about that the models are only as good as the inputs into the model. And so some of the companies are using a very fast, I'm going to say cheap way because the, the real issue was the, the dollars and cents of this, um, to make models, but they aren't taking in all of the variables that are in there, wind, temperature, atmospheric conditions, terrain, all that kind of stuff. The one that is available to do all of that and does a very good job of it, um, is a very expensive model. And then when we asked the question specifically what expensive was, is that if you took one pipeline for a hundred miles and ran that model at every mile, which would be ideal, um, and then run twelve different wind directions and several different temperatures, then it would take forty-four years to run that one hundred miles. Because the, I mean, it just would be astronomical number to run that kind of a, uh, dispersion model. So, um, I did ask them the question very directly that, um, in response, we use the Aloha software, um, which comes with our cameo hazardous material suites. Uh, BJ's heard of that one before. And they said our, our response models are very good, um, because we are inputting at the time of the release. We're putting in temperature, atmospheric conditions, wind, all of those variables. We're putting that into our software. And so is a weather service. So we, besides us having it on our computers, we can call the weather service and they have all of those variables to be able to put in and plot from the weather service. We can call the weather service and they have all of those variables to be able to put in and plot from the weather service. And then they're actually able to, to move that model for us down the road. Depending on what the weather conditions are forecast. So I felt good that at least we're using. A solid model for our response. It didn't make me feel better about the models that they're using for. Plume modeling in their plans, but that is what it is. So. That's a discussion that they're going to have at Washington is what kind of modeling are they going to require? Of new pipelines going in, whether it's CO2 or whether it's a new gas line, what kind of modeling do you have to do ahead of time? And then the last. Well, it's not the last. So the next one was that the CO2 pipelines. Are capturing and most of these are going from somewhere down there to somewhere up in. Dakota or they're going over to Illinois. The problem is, is that one pipeline can be collecting from four or five different sources. And so then the question became, how do they guarantee the quality? Or the, the cleanness, however you want to say that, of the CO2 going in because it can't have moisture. And it can't have other contaminants in it. But if you're collecting from five different types of. Places like the ethanol plant and then you're collecting from someplace else, how do you maintain that? Quality control on what's going into the pipeline? Because any contaminants in there tend to affect the erosion. But they also affect if that's released, what the response is going to be because of the contaminants with inside that. So. That was another one of the, one of the objects. And then. I guess the last thing, we, they had. They had three or four people from Sartarsha. I believe that's the name, Mississippi, where the release of the CO2 and the hydrogen sulfide was. The one thing that is. I would say it was unique there is that they had a company that was not operating ethically, at least in my opinion. They had released, they knew they had a release and it was forty five minutes before anybody knew about the release. And it only came after nine one one calls came in. And then the. Emergency manager called the company saying. We've got this thing going on. Do you know anything about it? And they go, oh yeah, we've got a, we've got a major leak a mile up away from you. It's like, well, it really would, would have been nice to know. So that was another one of the things that the, the emergency management side. Especially hit on was making sure that there is a very strong. Notification. Rulemaking that they have to have good monitoring on it and that they have to have. Good notification systems in place. And so that was, that was a huge piece. The last. The last thing was the training of the responders and the response of the responders. So. What we tried to impress upon them because they're out of Washington. One guy said he even drives two hours in his commute. Well, two hours in Washington DC. Is like driving from West Des Moines. To Altoona. And it's, I mean, that's how long it can take you to drive across. They don't have any idea about rural response and all of those are full-time departments out there. And so a couple of firefighters got up and talked and then I was the, I think I was one of the last people to speak that last day. Was for them to understand in the rulemaking that they're talking about pipelines that are going through rural America. With ninety five percent of them being volunteer. Ninety five percent of those very short staffed. Sometimes departments can only get two or three people out. And if we don't have the right equipment. And the right training, we're still not going to be doing any good. So those were the things that I. Pushed them on at the very end of their rulemaking. I did make several contacts with them. The meeting went from. Eight o'clock in the morning until about six o'clock at night. It was supposed to be an eight hour meeting and it ended up in. Quite long. A lot longer than it was supposed to be. But it was, again, them taking public comment. Very seriously making notes. And again, I saw. Everybody that was part of FEMSA that I recognized as part of FEMSA, taking notes and having good discussions with everybody that was there. So. In addition to that meeting, I will be gone this week down to Kansas City for our Midwest. Region seven hazmat conference. And I'm sure we'll be discussing this a lot more down there in the next. Four days. So, thank you. Better business. Other comments.
Thanks, Thomas.
Sign up.
That's okay.
I got Robert first. Let's go, Robert.
I'm going to thank Tom. And if you guys sent them or he went on his own accord, I found him very engaging. Very informed and I let him know. I let him know that, that my opinion of Tom changed. Okay, I think he is working for the people. So I, I appreciate that. Last time I spoke here, I got heated. I want to apologize to you guys for that. As we learned in FEMSA, at FEMSA and at the meetings that we've had throughout the state, and I have been engaged. This topic does make people heated. We're not ready for these pipelines. Okay, Sullivan and his group. Yeah, the other group, they're not forthcoming with their safety guide. Why? We heard the term gaps a lot. The federal regulators not ready for these pipelines. The number, the number one thing that came up from the citizens. Is to have FEMSA. Do a moratorium until this issue can be fully analyzed. Fully regulated. Components have to be inspected, valves have to be inspected. They have rules going in for auto, auto safe triggering devices, valves, what we call failsafes in our system. Loss of pressure happens online, we don't have to rely on, on a complacent. Individual to notice and go forty five minutes like they did in Sartar, in Mississippi. The system will respond itself and the system will shut down. When we have, when we had our informative meeting and I missed summits, but I went to navigators, at that time I posed a question. And they didn't have that. Available. They didn't have those valves going in. Now they have to have them going in, which is awesome. Liquid. They have to hydro test these lines with water. Up to the three thousand PSI. They don't even know how they're going to displace that water and water can't be in there with CO2 movement. There, there are so many complicated issues with these pipelines. That we still need to learn. We, this meeting was for safety. Safety is, is a priority. But it's a constitutional issue. Kilo versus City of New London was one thing. This is far, this is far greater. In the case Kilo versus the City of New London, that Supreme Court. The majority took out the words for public use out of the Fifth Amendment, essentially. One court, one activist court. For those that signed the easement, they have no recourse. They signed. For the patriots and landowners that have not signed, we will see them at Supreme Court. This matter cannot stand the way it is because it has national implications across our land. They win this one. Property rights is no more. They have plans. As Mr. Creighton has says, they have plans. Between sixty thousand and ninety thousand miles of CO2 pipelines for America. And as he also stated, the interstate infrastructure is four, is on. Is forty seven thousand miles. Of highways. So they're going to essentially. Almost double that. One pipeline will go in if you allow it in our county. And they will control that footprint of land. That swath of land. The legislators in Iowa. Debated legislations for pipeline or through eight. They're not done with us, guys. So we ask you the same thing we ask of FEMSA. And you guys have the power. We ask that you have hearings. And that you invite the citizens of this county. You hear their concerns. And that you propose a moratorium. I've been to other counties and they're doing just that. That, that you. Ask and set. An appropriate setback from businesses, communities, livestock. That you have plume modeling for the area that I live in because that is not flat land. That is. A very special green space that we all love and treasure. That you make the companies disclose the safety items involved here with plume modeling. That they, it would be awesome if they can say, okay, we researched. And, and Bill's going to go up to somebody, he's going to say, I think setbacks should be a thousand feet. I challenge you to do that, Bill. I challenge you to disclose our information. Lastly, I talked to Darryl on a few occasions. I know you guys are working behind the scenes. But to be more vocal, like I've seen other supervisors be more vocal on this. You are elected in there to stand with the people. And to see for their well-being, their safety and primarily their constitutional rights.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, is Kathy.
I have some copies of things for you. This comes from FEMSA. I thank you for sending Tom Creighton down to this meeting. I think Tom had his eyes open when he was down there because I talked to him at the beginning. And he said, these pipelines have told us from the beginning that it's just another pipeline. I think he realized this is not just another pipeline. And when we even said that to the FEMSA people, they said, no. They, they were shocked to hear that that's what these companies are telling our supervisors and our representatives. This is not just another pipeline. I had the privilege of talking to Max Kiba who moderated it. I had the. Chance to talk to him before the meeting. He called me and asked me to be, if I would consider being on a panel. Which they were talking to four different landowners, but they only needed one. And I felt the others were more qualified to be on that. But I was able to ask him some personal questions as we talked on the phone. And as we talked, one of, one of the things that they said that happened in Sartarsha. Was that they never notified neighbors and they never notified the towns. And I said, that is exactly what it is here. None of my neighbors have been notified and our towns have not been notified that they are in a danger zone. I think when they talked about the plume modeling. It was very relevant that everything on this plume depends on the weather and the. And the lay of the land and all of those kinds of things. And it falls heavy and low to the ground and it can spread up to seven miles. On some of those depending on the side, size of the pipe. So I live six miles from Iowa Falls in Ackley. If, and we have those two pipelines crossing close to us next to the river tracks, both of those towns will be in danger. I think it was good to have the emergency management people there because in Sartarsha, Mississippi, they fortunately had just bought. The apparatus to protect them to go into these areas. But each one of those costs six thousand dollars for a rescue person. Who pays for that? And that's, those are some of the questions that were brought up. I think in Sartarsha, they talked about their valves were nine miles apart and it took. I forget how many. It took how many hours to empty the pipeline? I know. Four or five hours to empty the pipeline. Our valves are twenty miles apart. So we'll have twenty miles of CO2 escaping. And it will take more than that four to five hours. I think Sartarsha has talked about two, one of the rescuers said that the next day. For a thousand feet, there was frozen ice on the ground. So these are not just regular pipelines. We need. A plan to do what happens. What I handed you came directly from talking to Max Kiba and he said. That they worked on this several years ago. And it is the authority of the state and the county. To be able to set rules and regulations as far as zoning and as far as setbacks. So I, they were shocked when we told them that. Our counties are being sued from these companies because they said that is your. You have that authority to make those rules and regulations. And they were shocked when. They talked to the, one of the supervisors from Shelby County. That they had called a, like a Marxist or something like that. And, and then met with him and says. And we said, and that's the person that they called back to. So I think if anything else FEMSA really listened. They are making a lot of rules and regulations that won't be done for two years. And so I think the whole theme of it was. We need to put a pause on these until we have those safety regulations out there. And so. I think you have authority from this to make rules and regulations and I would ask you to do that. I know some counties who are afraid of the lawsuit are doing rules and regulations and they're passing the first and second. Hearings of them and holding off until the third, until the lawsuit is done. I think that's fine, but I think when you realize how bad, how hazardous these pipelines are. We need to set some rules in place and I would ask you to do that. Thank you.
So I'm Marion Cooper. I attended day one of the two day hearing held last week in Des Moines. Of the Federal Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration FEMSA. So you've heard from me before regarding safety concerns. Associated with the hazardous liquid CO2 pipelines proposed to be built. By several companies across several Midwestern states, including many miles up in here in Hardin County. Attending the meeting were around, and, and Mr. Creighton gave a wonderful report. It was very thorough. So I'll just add a few things. Attending the meeting were around two hundred people physically there. Another eight hundred were online. There were at least four Iowa legislators there, at least four county supervisors there, plus EMS people from all across the state. Again, I, I appreciate that Mr. Creighton witnessed and gave such a thorough report. To this important hearing, which was live streamed from Des Moines. The FEMSA folks there told us. How unusual it was for them to conduct hearings outside of Washington DC. Locating this hearing in Des Moines was a response to the fact that Iowans in particular are. Asking a whole lot of questions about the safety aspects of. About the safety aspects of these proposed. CO2 pipelines. You might remember nineteen months ago, I gave each of you a copy of journalist Dan Ziegard's Huffington Post article about the CO2. Pipeline rupture that occurred near Sartarsha, Mississippi in February twenty twenty. It was that Sartarsha accident that's at the center. Of FIMSA's latest process of new rulemaking. These new rules are expected, they're supposed to be ready by early twenty twenty four, but it could take a year before those new rules get finalized. So that's the two year. Window we're talking about. Frankly, landowners who were at the meeting. They insisted, one after the other, they'd get up and tell their stories and then they'd say, you know. They want FISA to make its new rules as quickly as possible, but also as strong as possible. And these landowners, and I'm one and Kathy's one, there are quite a few of us who kind of hang together quite a bit lately. And we've been educating ourselves for about two years now on the risks associated with these projects. So we know whereof we speak. Landowners also told FISA that they wanted the agency to issue a moratorium. What they meant by that was a moratorium advisory. FISA doesn't, I don't think FISA has the power to say to the states, you have to have a moratorium. Rather, they can say. We would suggest, we would advise you to institute a moratorium. Because, and this is our concern, because the pipeline companies are trying to get Iowa to hurry. And grant them construction permits along with the power of eminent domain. So they can build and install these pipelines before any new safety measures are imposed. Because it's cheaper for them to do it that way. That's unacceptable. That's a safety be damned and then temple. Iowans just won't stand for it. We don't have any intention of being guinea pigs. So we want the entire permitting process halted, if possible, until the new safety rules are in place. Finally, we asked FISA to clarify for us. Precisely what the various levels of government, federal, state, local can and cannot impose on all of this from a safety. Standpoint. It's just wrong that even, that it's, that it's even a question. Whether or not a county can write and enforce an ordinance requiring, say, a setback existence for CO2 pipelines from, say. A school or a house or a cave home. Yet that's what the pipeline companies say. When they take a county to court over an ordinance. One of the panels we heard from at this meeting was all about which governmental authority has jurisdiction over which. Level of protection. And the panel concluded that questions still remain. So that's not good enough. We are hoping for answers rather than a game of whack a mole. So the entirety of the two days of presentations will soon be made available on the FISA website. They have like. A rule that says, within thirty days, they have to put that up there. And so public comments on the new rule are also being accepted. And I have a. If you're interested, I've got the. A web address for that. A lot of. Let's put it this way. I, I know that Harden County has filed to intervene. On at least one of the IUV's CO2 pipeline dockets and that. Mr. Hoffman has, has filed a personal objection to the use of eminent domain. My understanding is that the county attorney. Darryl Meyer hasn't really had time to do. Much active participation as the agent of the intervention that he did file to do. So. So he, there was a filing to intervene, but yet there's kind of nothing there, or at least that's not what I've seen. So. So that plus the personal nature of Mr. Hoffman's objection to me anyway, that even together, those things don't really have any weight. The weight of a full on objection by the whole board of supervisors to any of the goings on connected with the CO2 pipelines. As well as being, you know, dealt with at the state level. So seems like our voice as a county seems more silent than it really ought to be. I think there are something like forty four counties that have filed actual objections at the board of supervisors level. And then another twenty some towns and cities and another twenty three some entities like schools and stuff. So people are voicing an opinion about this and we'd like this. Have you guys step up to? That's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Did we have any other public comments?
Just one quick comment. Some of the citizens are asking that we bring Zoom back, sir. So some are disabled. They can't get around and they wish to see this live. Okay, if Zoom can happen with other meetings, Zoom can happen with this meeting. And, and I implore you to reexamine that. And give those tools to our citizens first. Thank you.
There are no more public comments?
I take some exception to. The claim that we haven't had time as a county or in my office to engage. The proceedings with pipelines. Perhaps you don't subscribe to the paper. We'll go ahead and put it on the website. We did a press release saying. Basically every month since January of last year, what has the county done to. Respond, address, you know, what, what action and positions have we taken? And I originally thought I would come up here and address some of the other. Comments, but I just wanted to, to take exception to that because we haven't been sitting on our hands and just watching, you know, the traffic go by. For our current county ordinances. Pipeline would have to obtain from the Board of Adjustment a conditional use permit. All of the easements that have been. Entered and offered, whether they've been entered or not. Entered are for the use of the property for the purpose of a pipeline. So the county's position is that. Those easements, we, the county has not recognized any of them. Because those easements aren't supported by a conditional use permit for the ultimate use of that easement. The request has been made to cross county roads. And we said, no, because we don't acknowledge the easements. One thing that folks that have been. Offered easements that have rejected them could do to get a hearing, to get some. Boundaries established. They could present. That easement. To the Board of Adjustment. Or conditions to be placed on it before they make the decision to sign it or not. So far. No landowner that has not entered an easement. None have done that. That. Would probably. Get. This ball moving in terms of what conditions, because we already have. Ordinances in place that will allow for conditions to be placed on these easements. We've chosen to stick with our ordinances that were in place when the project began rather than. Create a large framework that's going to end up. Landing us in federal court. We can achieve these through our existing ordinances. So. I just wanted to. Let the public know that we have, and I'll, I'll have that, the press release posted on the county page. So those that don't get the paper can see what. The history has been over the last fourteen, fifteen months. Thank you.
Well, from there, I could ask for a German.
Much to adjourn.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded and discussion. Here none on, here say aye. Bush carries word. Thank you. We have Grange and nine thirty. Oh, it's just that we put that off and jump to our performance review. Do you have a lot for us?